City council meeting for Monday, July 23, 2018. It is 6:01 PM. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door to the council's chamber. You'll be called to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed in our public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Mayor Williams. Dick Anderson's excused Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
And Susan Walkie.
Here.
Would you please all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. We roll straight into consent agenda. OLCC application for P2C hotels, DBA Ashley Inns and Suites, off-premise sales, new outlet, regular meeting minutes, a regular meeting May 14, 2018, regular meeting minutes of work session June 4, 2018, minutes of regular meeting June 11, 2018.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I did submit a few typos to the city recorder.
Talk slowly because I just turned off my computer.
But I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and second discussion?
I do. Is there, you know, with the continued off-premise sales of alcohol in the city, I just see one after the other, is that, what are we going to discuss about that specifically?
I think anything's up for discussion.
Sure, so that's, so that's what I would like to discuss, is now, you know, over and over now. So now we have the highest per capita of marijuana dispensaries, and now we have another continuing, Ashley Inn is just a block away from the casino, and, which obviously sells alcohol until 2:00 in the morning. So I just, you know, as us as a city, what are we going to do? And you have, you have Mojo Coffee there who sells off-premise alcohol. You have, I don't know about the brewery right there, the casino, and now Ashley Inn there, you have a quadrangle of sorts of alcohol establishment. So, you know, just us as the approval in committee of how much alcohol do we want out there? How much do we want out there? And is that a concern? And, you know, I know I saw Chief Palmer gave it approval, and great, you know? But on the other side of that, you know, what, what do we want?
Mr. Apicello, quick question. Could you, is that a zoning issue, is that strictly licensing?
Well, what we're here on right now is licensing, and we're very constrained. So if you recall back in 2013, we had dusted up about some new liquor establishment. And so we are constrained by the licensing laws, and our comments are really only limited to the specific criteria that are outlined in our ordinance and in the statute. And we're also quite constrained in terms of zoning, I believe, with regard to the location of alcohol. But I could tell you, we're not preempted, but in terms of the licensing, but we are very constrained. I'd have to go back and look and talk to Richard Townsend about what additional zoning limitations there might be, but I'd say right now that I wouldn't think that you have much leeway in the licensing area. I don't know about zoning, but I believe that there's probably some state law preemption there as well, so.
If you could just forward something to us and get this ball rolling?
Here's my concern, if I may, is that, so you have that establishment being able to sell off, off premises, and then I have Ashley Inn, which is a hotel, that being the first one that I know of that has off-premise alcohol sales, which it says in its application is open 24 hours, and I know OLCC can sell until 2:00 AM, but, you know, then it just goes out there. And so here we are, that being the first, is this just now going to just be from, you know, Rhodes End all the way down? If we are constrained, you know, I just see every other opportunity for them to just sell alcohol all the way down. So I understand that, you know, we're constrained and everything, but just like the thousand feet between dispensaries, you know, one there goes the mall. So I think we're going to have a, more of a responsibility for what we're doing here, really, is what we're allowing to have happen.
Any further discussion?
I, I just have a comment, and that I found a few typos, and I sent those on to the city recorder, so she already has those, for the minutes.
And I'm sorry, Councilor Walkie, could you restate the motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you pulled one. Okay, great. Ooh, $5 fine. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here are your non-motion carries, thank you. No deliberations. Oh, we did have just a, not an official meeting, but we had a couple comments, Kathy, about our agenda. When we don't have anything, we would, I think we'd all like the word "none" next to something. So where we have council deliberations, "none," or we have resolutions and we don't have anything, is that possible to do within the template?
If that's unanimous consent, then we can take that direction.
Is that?
Yes, sir.
I don't know what we're talking about.
I don't either.
So I'm not going to agree?
Sure.
Okay, I was just, I was asking the mayor this question earlier when I was stumbling during our last meeting, the Urban Renewal Agency meeting, where we have items listed on the agenda, ordinances perhaps, or resolutions, or hearings, and when, and it's confusing to me, if we don't have anything, if we don't have anything on our agenda, then we, could we say "none" next to the agenda item?
If I may, for instance, letter J has resolutions, and there's nothing underneath it, you want it to say "none"?
Yeah, it's clear.
I think it's clear that there's nothing there, but if, to me, obviously we're different, but if you're asking for it, I don't see if there's anything wrong with it.
I think it would also, if I could...
Sir Casper, is that, is that all right with you?
Sure.
Yeah, roll.
It's not, it's not really unanimous consent if you got somebody that disagrees, so you probably need to vote.
I think he did say it's okay.
We're missing somebody. Susan?
No, he was talking about... Oh, me?
You're good with it if we...
I, I don't think it's necessary, but I will say yes, is what I'm saying.
You're good to go. All right, thank you. Look at that. Problem solved.
Easy peasy.
You're welcome. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items, Boone Marker.
Okay. Can I fill it out, all of them?
Yes, you may. Good evening, Councilors. Boone Marker, I'm Lincoln City. I'm also here representing the Parks and Recreation Department on my job responsibilities as a recreation program supervisor. To let you guys know about an event coming up, August 7th, it's a Tuesday night, and we'll be celebrating a National Night Out. It's the 37th Annual National Night Out, and I do believe, unless somebody can correct me, this might be the first time Lincoln City is participating in the National Night Out. Over 16,000 communities participate in that, and we are a registered city for the first time this year. National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhood safer, more caring places to live. National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back the true sense of community. Furthermore, it provides a great police, police, great opportunity for police and neighbors to come together under positive circumstances. And right now, we've got, I have free food set up with partnerships with Cisco and Northwest Natural for about up to 800 people. I've got two bounce houses, a dunk tank, live music. We'll have all the things for a great little community event. And I come here tonight to make the request to you guys, give you guys the first opportunity to accept or decline to be in our dunk tank. So it's a 10-minute slot, started at 5:00 PM, and I always encourage people, you want to be the first person in the dunk tank rather than the last.
Why is that?
Water.
Ew!
Yeah. It's also a fundraiser for our youth scholarship fund that helps benefit the recreation program through the community center.
I'll fill them all out.
So for $1, a participant can get three throws, and then for $5, they can run up and dunk you. So it's a great opportunity for people to come and have some fun, and I'm recruiting local volunteers, starting with our city council and mayor.
Who's this fun for?
This is, this is fun for everybody in the community.
What's the date?
It's a Tuesday, August 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00, and this will be at Curtis Park. I'll have, again, like I said, live music, food, games and entertainment, and I'd love to have you guys up on the stand for a 10-minute block. So the clipboard's going around with Councilman Hoagland, and he's going to pass around, so I thank you guys for your optimism in volunteering. There's also a spot there to write down if you'd like to volunteer in another capacity. Thank you.
Hey, Boone, before you leave, I was not here when council got to congratulate you on the float. I got to watch it on TV, and then I heard, because I was marching with the mayors, and well received, well done, great, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're bet, you're bet.
5:00 is what I'm going. You guys want to dunk me?
I'll bring my...
Is it Tuesday?
It's Tuesday night.
Okay. Well, he's soaking wet, I don't want to do two of them. Should we have fog? Okay, I'm, thanks. Kevin, sorry, Kevin Kofel? Thank you. Keep wanting to go Kafel.
Hello, my name is Kevin Kofel, and I live in Lincoln City. After being here last week and reading the last news guard, I'd like to give my comments about fireworks topic. I'm concerned that a rush to judgment may dampen our 4th of July celebrations. I enjoy using the fireworks purchased here in the city, and because a few out-of-towners and reckless individuals get out of hand, apparently the solution is to ban fireworks. Not everyone can see the professional pyrotechnics or wants to battle the crowded road. Personally, we can see the taft from our house, but it's not like that for everyone. To me, this isn't much different than the gun debates. A few ruin it for everyone else. People determined to be reckless end up putting law-abiding people in the same category. I've read the arguments about the mental midgets that like explosions. It's condescending and elitist. Don't worry, this is all for your own good, all you adults. You'll thank us later. I think a citywide vote could decide this issue, and we would know how the voters feel. I'm pretty much 100%, 99 and 9 tenths percent sure that no city in Oregon has a total ban on fireworks. And let's not be the only city in Oregon to ban fireworks. It would be a stigma that would hang over the city every summer. And we have an election coming in November, and, you know, if it continues to be an issue, you know, maybe we could just add that to the ballot. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate it. Carol?
Carol Kofel from Lincoln City, and with my son, after the last council meeting, I needed to discuss the fireworks issue.
Carol, I'm going to ask if you can pull that, pull that...
Let me know if you can. A few litter bugs and irresponsible people cannot be allowed to destroy an American holiday. If there are trouble spots, such as Rhodes End, we would have to close the road to non-residents, put clear stern warnings in VRD locations about penalties, we could revoke deposits, ban people from future renting. A citywide ban on fireworks, illegal and otherwise, is going to sound the death song for our city on this popular holiday. Personally, I never understood banning fireworks on a beach made out of sand to begin with. Perhaps it is a safety issue, but many things here used at the beach are dangerous, boogie boards, for instance. I wouldn't be surprised if our fire and rescue would like those things tossed in the trash. I have strong opinions about this issue. My father hated the holiday because it frightened his little doggy. Well, many things loud frighten me, like musical cars that drive by our house, for instance. Many tourists come here for the 4th of July, and I'm not always thrilled to see car after car drive by our house on the way to a VRD or to bypass some anomaly on Highway 101. The subject of litter, though, is a serious one. But where is the outrage after the citywide beach cleanup? No, this is a focused attack on an American institution under the guise of safety and litter. A citywide vote on this issue added to November's ballot could solve this with another American tradition, a vote by the people. I'm also aware of tonight's agenda, and I am pleased to see the council will be considering the issue of animal waste in the city, and I thank the council's promptness on this important issue to myself. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thank you, appreciate it. John Force?
Hi, everybody. I'm John Force, 1820 Northeast West Devils Lake Road, Lincoln City. You're probably tired of hearing me like a broken record, but it never seems to stop, so. As many of you might remember, I was here several times in the last six months inquiring about the confusion in the VCB policies of requiring a special event permit, which I was required to have to run my events out of Canyon Lake Park with the accompanying insurance binder for 13 years. Ed Dreystad told the out-of-town promoters that after all these years, they didn't need a permit to run their event, effectively blocking my event due to safety issues. They ran their event, and since they had no safety monitors to warn tourists, some logs rolling in the surf in a surge into the city park pinned the tourists, and they were lucky to escape injury. There were also traffic and parking issues that Chief Killian was required to attend to. After cornering Ed, Ron Chandler and Apicello, they admitted that a permit was required after all, and fined the perpetrators a couple hundred bucks, seems like a paltry fine for a near fatal event. Also, as a result of the illegal event, I lost a $15,000 grant from the VCB, which expired at the end of the season. I applied for that grant again for this season and was turned down. Seems like retribution for exposing Ed's ineptitude with the special events permits fiasco. I would like to ask the council for that grant since they have the authority to do so. The grant basically covers the webcast, which effectively, besides the event itself, presents Lincoln City commercials to a potential worldwide audience, over a million viewers, plus the 500 to 1,000 onsite spectators. That's what I'm asking.
Thank you.
That's, that's in the, can we have a discussion about it down the line?
Down the line, absolutely.
It's in the VCB bylaws or whatever, that if somebody isn't happy with the decision or wants to ask for more than, than they're able to give, you can talk to the city council. So I'd like to make an appointment to do that when you guys have time.
Great thing to do.
Will somebody contact me?
Yeah, I've normally turned to Ron and say, take care of that, I don't have Ron here, so...
I think decisions have to be made by Ron Chandler, and whether or not those decisions can be appealed, I'll have to talk to him about that.
Yeah, so...
But remember, the VCC only makes recommendations to Ron Chandler on their award of grants.
But we'll, we'll follow up a little bit on that.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, John, appreciate it. Anyone else who did not sign up would like to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, Gavin, sorry. No, it's all right. It's my bad eyes.
Hi, it's my first commission meeting, it's a pleasure to be here. Been to a fair amount of them when I was in Florida, so, but this is nice to be here and happy to be a part of Lincoln City.
Just give us your name, we don't need addresses or anything.
Okay, I'm Gavin Curtis. I'm here to talk about the Sletz River contamination as well...
Gavin, guys, there's been like three different parties that have been speaking tonight. We can hear everything, so if you need to talk, go out in the hall. Thank you so much, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to speak about the Sletz River contamination, and also about the wastewater treatment management that we have here in Lincoln City. Been doing a fair amount of work with it since I've been here. I talked to Tina French about anaerobic digestion, and I've spoken to Terry Thompson down at the Lincoln County Commission, because we need to solve this issue of the Sletz, the Sletz River. It's a major concern, and I think, I think there's, there's some good solutions out there, and I'm trying to be a part of the solution at this point. So that's kind of why I'm here, and I'm introducing myself to the council, because that's the work I'm going to be continuing to do in earnest as, as I move forward. And at the same time, one of the big things, like right now, I really appreciate what the city has done to mitigate their, what they, what they're putting into the Sletz basin there, but unfortunately, that's not a sustainable solution. Dewatering it and taking it and dumping it at, at the landfill, it's not a sustainable option. I think we can all agree to that, you know, because we don't want to just put more stuff in landfill. So anaerobic digestion gives us the possibility of, of creating energy and taking that $400,000 that we're paying just this year alone for, for the, that, plus a $350,000 a year electric bill that's going to go up, and both of those are going to go up significantly. Our tipping fees right here in Oregon are low, low, low compared to Washington and California, and I guarantee you, it's major companies that own these landfills, and the rates are going to skyrocket, and that's going to affect ratepayers in the city for water and garbage. We already have the recyclable issue, where that's forced rates up for, for city people, so I'm looking to help put a permanent solution to help stabilize rates as well. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk further to the city about it at some point.
Sure. Contact Ron Chandler or city manager?
Ron Chandler?
Yeah.
I did leave a couple of messages, and I haven't been called back as yet. So I'd appreciate it if somebody could...
Trust me, we'll get back to you.
I would really appreciate that.
If not, you feel free to email us, and we'll prod them a little bit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming forward with that, appreciate it. Okay, so now, actually, anyone who did not sign up wished to speak. Seeing none, we move on. Presentations, recommendation from the library advisory board regarding elimination of overdue fines at Driftwood Park Library.
Oh.
Yes? What?
She asked me something.
Oh.
Well, I wasn't telling them no. Sorry, Kirsten.
Good evening, I'm Kirsten Broadbeck Kenny, I'm the library director, and I'm here with Sheila Stevens tonight, who is the chair of the, the library advisory board, and I'm going to let her introduce the topic, and then I'll take it from there.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you for taking time to listen to us. In early February, Kirsten distributed a packet of several documents on the current trend of eliminating fines in libraries across the country. At our February 21st meeting, we discussed the documents that she gave us, and as a group, we really felt that the positive outcomes from eliminating the fine policies outweigh the current policies as far as their negative impact on the community. So at our 20, February 21st meeting, the library board unanimously voted to support the elimination of the fines policy at the library. And Kirsten will explain more.
Sure, I'd be happy, I'm going to give you a little bit of background on this. The wheels sort of started turning on this for me back in 2016, when, as you may remember, we, with the council's approval, the library had the largest fine amnesty that we've ever had. For one week, we waived overdue fines for anyone who came back to the library, and we also waived fines on any quote-unquote "lost" items that people brought back in good condition. And what we found during that is that we did unblock a lot of previously blocked accounts, and library accounts get blocked if they accumulate $25 or more in fines on the account. We started out with a little over 800 accounts that were blocked due to fines. At the end of the amnesty, we only had 267. So we unblocked a lot of accounts, we got a lot of great interaction with the public, but the biggest thing we took away from it was that there were a lot of people who came in who had assumed that they had fines on their account, and they were so afraid of this that they had not been back to the library in years. And sometimes they didn't have any fines at all, sometimes it turned out the fines were maybe $5, and they, they thought that, you know, they were scared. They thought, oh my gosh, I can't remember what, you know, I must owe them money, I don't want to go in. And that sort of started getting the wheels turning for us, so I started doing some research and looking at what the, you know, what research had been done in other communities to, about library fines. Are they actually effective in terms of getting people to return their books on time? And what I was surprised to discover is that none of the large-scale studies that have been done demonstrate that they actually get people to bring stuff back any earlier than just telling people, hey, it's, it's overdue. For people who can afford fines, they bring it back and they pay the fine, they consider it their tax for keeping the book longer than they were supposed to. For the people who maybe can't afford the fines, the result is that they simply do not use the library at all. And this is, especially has an impact on children who don't necessarily have either the means to get to the library themselves or the funds to pay fines if the fines are So I also did a lot of research looking at library systems that had eliminated fines to find out what results they saw from that. The biggest result has been that it has a neutral or positive impact on library circulation and on items being returned. It's very, basically, it's, it's a good, it's been a good move for those library systems. I don't know of any that have gone back to charging fines at having eliminated them. And we, we have a precedent right here in Lincoln County. Newport Public Library has not charged overdue fines for many years. And what they do instead, and what we would do were we to, to make this change, is once an item is six weeks overdue, a bill goes out in the mail saying, okay, this is the cost of replacing the book because we now consider it lost. If you return the book to the library, you don't have to pay the bill, and it's the cover price of the book, $25 or $16 or whatever. And it also includes a notification that under Oregon state law, the unlawful retention of library materials is against the law. And what Newport has found is that's very effective in getting their items back, and it's been working very well for them. So there were a couple of different options that I outlined in the report that I gave you, but I'd love to answer any questions you might have, and go from there.
Well, I'll jump right in. I read the, the different studies, and again, it says nothing, basically, it's just a wash. It doesn't say it's good, doesn't say it's bad, it's just, okay. There's a couple of different components here that I'd like to talk about. One, there seemed to be an emphasis on it's keeping children from using the library. Well, then perhaps make that, take that component out and say, okay, we won't fine juvenile books. But a grown man or woman who can't seem to get a book back or is so afraid to make a phone call, I just find that, I can't fathom that, to say, do I owe money on a book? It's, unless it's, you know, it's not a 20-mile trek through the snow to, to find information here, and I don't get that. So I don't, I don't buy that component of the argument. And one thing that distresses me, and I've shared with you before, I am a library junkie. I am, I was a geek from grade school and the Dewey Decimal System and all that. When a library book is overdue, that means I can't check it out. Someone is keeping it, and simply through fear, which is, again, odd to me, or just laziness or, or carelessness, is denying everyone else the use of that book. And I do think there needs to be a little bit of pain to that, and that's what a fine is, to say, hey, stop doing this. Now, do we do maybe a waiver? First time, great, amnesty, no sweat, you know, you, you had one, bad boy, bad girl. But if this is a trend in their life, and, and they're just showing, you know, disregard for this, I don't think it should be just simply forgiven. I really don't. Then going to the idea of, okay, we're going to bill you for the book, that immediately, I'm assuming will jump you straight into the $25, and they're going to be banned. Does there many books you have that are under 25?
Some children's books, paperbacks, sure.
So then what happens then? They, again...
As soon as they return the book, then that fine is cleared.
Until we decide, well, gosh, it's not coming back, so we're going to amnesty that too?
No. We never have amnestied items that were for lost books, unless the book is brought back, then we clear the fine. But for, for lost items, we don't ever waive those fines unless there's some kind of extenuating circumstance, like they're a victim of a crime or a fire or something like that.
And seeing, again, I go back to being an old man, but I remember when I had overdue books, my folks would pay it, and I'd have to work it off. Now, we were only talking a dime a book at that time, and so it was a day's yard work at grandma's house, and I was good to go. And so it was a day's yard work at Grandma's house and I was good to go. But I do think it's a component that was kind of dismissed in this that says, well, are we really teaching them anything or are we just teaching them to fear the library? Well, again, I don't know if I buy that. Maybe we are that world now where we can't call a library and say, do I owe you some money? It's odd to me to hear that.
Do you mind if I address that?
Please.
Because I think that there's a really important component of that, which is that for many of folks in our population who are not originally from here, who are coming in, maybe English is their second language, there is a lot of fear surrounding the idea of a government entity charging you money, that you might be in trouble with a government entity. It's a major source of discomfort. And, you know, for people who are on very, and also for people who want a very limited income, you know, for you or me, you check out 10 books, you bring them back a week late, that's about seven bucks. That's not a big deal. But for somebody who, you know, they're living close to the edge every month, that's another bill that they have to pay.
It's a bill they created. That's not, that's not, it's not heating oil.
Well, you know, I guess my-
Get the book back on time.
My perspective on this is that the studies seem to show that it doesn't actually get people to bring books back any sooner. It's not my job to teach people to be responsible. It's my job to be a good steward of the library materials and to make sure that I'm removing barriers to people using the library. So I guess I understand where you're coming from, but when I look at what my job is, which is to promote the library and get people to use it and, you know, make it so that everybody in the community can use it, and I see this as a really low-hanging fruit in terms of, we know it's presenting a barrier, and it's something pretty simple to change, and the pain is not very deep. It's maybe $4,000 a year that we take in in fines.
So I'll beat this horse one more time and then I'll drop my point. We have a continual drumbeat within the city of, we don't want punishment, we want compliance. Pretty much everything we do, when we talk about fines and this, that, it's always, we just want compliance. And to me, this is a compliance issue. You went into a voluntary agreement with the city or the county, whoever, you know, it says, I will check this out and I will return it. And you don't. Well, to me, that says you violated that agreement and we need to bring you into compliance.
Except that compliance is bringing the book back.
Yeah.
If you don't bring the book back, you get billed for it. And that point, yes, you are getting billed for it. And if you don't bring it back, then you do get fined. But just charging somebody five cents a day for as long as they keep that book, that's not compliance, that's just a fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So as it is right now, you charge per day. And after how many days is the book determined lost?
Six weeks.
So six weeks at 10 cents a day, so four, what is it, $4.20 plus the cost of the book? Or what's, seven, was it, how much is the fine? I'm sorry.
The fine is five cents per day per item.
So I don't know what the math is there.
And we, overdue fines are topped out at either the cost of the item or $10, whichever is lower.
For the fine, in addition to, so-
In addition to the cost of the replacing the book.
Right. So at the end, what I'm trying to get at is at the end, you'll have fines plus the cost of the book.
Yes.
Right? So whatever that ends up being. Page four, six, or 40 of the packet, it says, "As diligent as they were, the research projects over 15 years, the authors could not uncover data to support the assumption held in the profession that existence of nominal fees and as an incentive to patrons to return materials." That clearly says, over 15 years, it doesn't work. That, I don't know how that is not saying one way or the other, to your point. You had 70% of the people that were outstanding accounts in 2016, 70% of them came back in and said, oh my gosh, thank you. So you had almost 600 people say to them, I felt bad. I didn't know, and I'm so happy that this is here. So that's direct knowledge from people saying, yeah, it is that way. She's not saying they're homeless people or people who are broke or anything. These are regular people that come in with the same values as you that could come in and say, you know what, I don't know what it was, but I felt bad. And the only thing that they said was the high price. And so we're going to get the cost of the book, which is ultimately what we want anyway, is to have our costs reimbursed. And I absolutely support this and did find that the studies showed that. And, you know, how many right now accounts are outstanding?
I haven't written, or I haven't run a report on that in a while, but I would say probably around 500.
So, I mean, so we could have another 350 people coming back to the library if this goes through. With the recommendation of the Friends of Driftwood, say it again, the title?
I'm the Chair of the Driftwood Public Library Advisory Board.
Advisory Board, thank you. With the recommendation of the advisory board.
If I could just add a question to what you've said. How many books can a person check out at a time?
Up to 25.
So they could have potentially 25 books out for six weeks.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I get back to the other point I made, is those are six weeks where nobody can use this book. And to me, that's just not fair.
But you're allowed those 76 weeks.
It's not fair, in my opinion.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I believe from reading the packet materials that there were some exceptions to the fine elimination, correct? If something was borrowed from another library?
Yes. We do charge overdue fines when we do an interlibrary loan, which is when we go outside of our system and we go to maybe Multnomah County or a university and we borrow one of their items. We would continue to charge overdue fines in that case because there's so much work and cost involved in obtaining those items. And returning them late jeopardizes our relationship with the owning libraries.
I appreciate all the research you did and attaching it to the staff report. I appreciate that.
I think this is a very good idea. I think anything should be encouraged to encourage reading and to continue to have good public relationships with the people in the community. Can we vote on this? Mr. Mayor?
There, if someone would like to make a motion.
I move to instruct the staff to prepare a resolution amending the City of Lincoln City fee schedule to eliminate the five cent per day overdue fee on regular items. Second.
We have a motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, I think we're going to have a money issue, so we're going to go ahead and just take a roll call on this one.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Anderson, or I'm sorry, Hogland?
Yes.
Then Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming up.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Public hearing ordinance, Resolution 201815, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City adopting revisions to the citywide fee schedule.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I just want to clarify that number six and number seven are the exact same thing. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah.
But they aren't.
But they are. But it says the same thing.
Well, ones-
Public comment and then the resolution.
One's supposed to be a public comment and the other's supposed to be the actual resolution, and I thought that was how I was supposed to enter it, and apparently I didn't do it right. Although not required to, we usually provide opportunity to comment, although in the case of removing a fee, probably won't have any objection. This is a follow-up from the Budget Committee meetings that we had this year. One of the items that came up was our practice of charging a convenience fee for utility billing court and recreation center when they pay. And the recommendation from the Budget Committee is that we resist or stop doing that. We aren't allowed to charge a fee if it's an auto pay to your credit card. So a lot of the credit card payments, we're already not charging a fee to anyway. It's just the ad hoc ones. I think I, in my staff memo, I think it'll be minimal financial impact because we will be able to reduce our fees from the merchant. We'll be able to get a different pricing tier if we don't charge a convenience fee. So I would, the Budget Committee recommended this, so I'm following up with a resolution for your consideration.
Your Honor, I have some comments.
Please.
I have no objection to removing the convenience fee for utility billing municipal court payments in parks and recreation, but I have some big problems further down the page. And I'm afraid if we approve this resolution, we are approving all, everything on this page.
Are you talking about the fee schedule? That's, the attachment A, that's currently what's in place, other than the one item?
Yeah, and it needs to be changed. The recording fees have gone up drastically. If we're only receiving, if we're only charging people $53 to record a deed, we're losing $40 for every deed. I think that maybe a better way to put the fees, as the recording fees, is to say pursuant to the county clerk's fee schedule. Not every county is the same. Lincoln County's satisfaction of lien is currently $76, not 35. And there's no fee for deferred improvement agreements, so I don't think we should be charging people to record them when we can't record them. Consents to annex deeds and easements are $93 plus $5 for each additional page, not 53. The other thing that troubles me on this fee schedule is if it's for city business, there's no fee. But if it's non-city business, it's a $10 fee. And I don't believe that a notary can charge some people and not others. So I'd like the city attorney to look into that to make sure that we're complying with notarial law.
I believe that some notaries in the city, just I think the answer to this is, I believe that some of the notaries in the city do nothing other than public, non-city, and then other notaries do only city. And so those individual notaries have divided. That's how I believe that has been handled, I think.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. That reassures me, but the recording fees need to be changed.
The recording fees, I think, went up on July 1st.
Yeah.
And I know that because I had to write something down for Kathy to record before it went up.
Yep.
And I'm sure that Debbie didn't put this resolution in front of you to change that because the only item on, that she has is in red, which is the interest rate.
And I'm not sure why it's in this section anyway. It's really a finance fee, but-
Yeah, but I think you're absolutely correct, is that the fee needs to say as per the-
County clerks.
County. And some things are actually the response, like the deferred improvement, that's the responsibility of the person who filed. Our policy is that they need to-
Record it themselves.
They need to pay for it.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're not paying for it, so therefore we're not charging. So, but it should probably say paid by property owner.
Right.
If you want to make those adjustments now, I suppose you can include that in your motion and we'll revise the resolution, or we can bring back the fee resolution at a future meeting with this addressed.
Thank you. I also didn't understand why there weren't any fees listed under the meeting rooms. It talks about the ordinance and the resolutions that adopted the fee, but it doesn't list the fees.
Can't answer that one. Did you, you want to bring this back cleaned up? You want a motion with revisions as stated?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion of this and the other.
Well, the only thing that I would caution is, is that, well, I mean, it's a state fee on the recording fees. That's going up. So when a fee goes up and it's a state fee, I'm not sure that we even need to have a public hearing because it's an automatic, we have to comply with the state. So normally, I think you can probably direct it to be done now, or you can get Debbie's fee changed today and we can bring it back at the next meeting correction. But I'm pretty sure if you go to show up and you only give us the prior fee, we're going to tell you that the state law controls and you're going to have to pay the full fee. So I don't think there's any chance we're going to get shorted by people in the next two weeks. It's up to you.
As long as the person taking the money knows that the fee's not-
Well, we're not beyond calling them back on the phone and saying,
Good.
Hey, you need to come back here and give us the right fee.
Well, motion? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion approving Resolution 2018 as amended to state that pursuant to Lincoln County.
It's state law.
State law, I'm sorry.
I believe that's what, it was a state law change effective July 1st, right?
Right. It was a state law change to add the $40. Actually, that's going into affordable housing. But each county's different, so I think it should be pursuant to the applicable county clerk's fee schedule.
There were quite a few fees thrown out there, and I'm not sure which ones are included as amended and what the amendment is.
If you're, again, if you're more comfortable, we can go back, you'd have to withdraw the motion, but you can have to go back to the alternative, they'll only do your fee today and-
Let me withdraw. Yes, please. May I make a motion to approve just this removal of the fee resolution 2018-15?
And return with the-
And return with the-
Additional resolution for the next meeting.
And return with the additional resolution for the new fee schedule.
Okay.
And the next meeting would be? August 13th. Okay, here, so, okay.
That's enough time?
Yeah, okay. Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anders, Hogland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
All right, then, just so I'm clear, do I need to do the next resolution or that's part of?
I think that resolution was, remember when you amended the council rules and you said you can have the public comment, public hearing, and then immediately thereafter, you can do the ordinance or resolution? That's basically what we tried to do here and it just showed up on the agenda as exactly the same thing, but that was the intention.
Nothing left to do on that.
Okay. Thank you.
So at this point, time for public comment on that. Anyone care to speak to this matter? Seeing none. Okay, now on to ordinances, correct? Ordinance number 2018808, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code. Mr. Appicello.
Okay, so just to be clear, there was, no one in the public wanted to talk about-
Correct.
-getting rid of the penalty or the fee for the credit cards. Okay. Your Honor, Council, this is ordinance 201808, and I'm just going to briefly talk about it before I conduct the first reading. It's on the agenda. You had made a motion a couple of meetings ago to clarify this, so I did. Let me explain. I didn't just create this myself. I went to the City of Portland's ordinance and I looked at some other ordinances, but I liked how the City of Portland dealt with it. So I'm just going to go through, we add a section 025, and in paragraph A, the first sentence basically says, "Your dog can't relieve himself on the sidewalk or on public property without you picking it up." That's the typical situation. You're walking down the sidewalk and somebody's got their animal and they need to pick it up immediately. The second situation, which is the second sentence, is a person has a dog and they decide to walk by one of your homes, and they come up on your yard and they relieve themselves on your yard. So in that case, that you, they have to remove the fecal matter immediately. So those are the two most common situations, that an animal does it on the public property or on private property not owned by the individual. The last sentence, and if there is only one sentence in here that I could get rid of, this would be this third sentence in paragraph A, it says, "No person shall permit animal waste to remain on private property owned or controlled by the person for a period of time longer than is reasonably necessary to remove the property and properly dispose of animal waste." And I took that language not from the City of Portland code, but from your own code, because the next section, 604030, talks about the removal of an animal carcass. And our own code right now says, "No person shall permit an animal carcass owned or controlled by him to remain upon public property or to be exposed on private property for a period of time longer than is reasonably necessary to remove or dispose of the carcass." So I could argue that this language isn't clear enough, and you should say so many days or so many hours, you shall remove the carcass. But I think what this is intended to do is allow you to bury your dog- But I think what this is intended to do is allow you to bury your dog in your yard, and doesn't make you do it immediately upon the expiration of your animal. So what I did was I, the theory there is that once every ten years or so, maybe, you might be burying your dog in your yard. Doesn't really have the same impact on water quality, or smell, or whatever, that not picking up your dog's droppings would have in, in a neighborhood from a nuisance perspective. So while I borrowed that language, I, I didn't use the word immediately, but I, I did say, you got to pick it up, and you can't just cover it. So that, again, if there's one sentence that I'm not thrilled with, it's that, but this was probably the only part of this which concerns the comments from, we got from the public about, hey, there's a nuisance condition on my neighbor's property, and can you address it? So this is something. So moving on, Portland addresses with regard to the first two issues, public property and private property not owned by you, that you better have a bag or some other means of picking it up. And specifically, I, it, it just seems that, I don't know, I, I, we haven't had a dog for a year and a half, and I still put on a jacket and reach in my pocket and pull out a plastic bag. So it's not that difficult a thing to require people to bring a means of picking it up with them. And then I had a request, I think it was the Planning Commission Chair, after this, you guys made a motion, actually emailed me and said, "Can you just make sure that people don't leave the bags alongside the road?" So that's where that last language in, that citizens were actually, their Planning Commission Chair actually sent me an email saying, "Would it be a problem if you said something about, please, that's not proper disposal?" So I actually wrote that in. Again, this is, the idea from public health, safety, and welfare point is that on your own property, on public property, and on other person's property, it's, it's a nuisance for sure. It can also contribute to stormwater runoff, water quality in streams, and you see that rationale expressed for this kind of regulation. So that was my attempt. I made it a Class C, which is a minimum eighty-five dollar fine and a maximum five-hundred-dollar fine. Again, classification is really your thing, but I thought eighty-five on the low end, five-hundred if you're a repeat offender. The judge would use his discretion, so...
If I've learned anything from discussions tonight, fines don't work, and it's too hard to return a book, but we can, it's not too hard to have a bag in your pocket. Just, if you'd like a...
This is just two different, yeah. Anyway, so I have some questions about this, if I might. This seems to be generally aimed at dogs, yet it does not say dogs. So my neighbor's cat is out there in violation.
Well, honestly, a neighbor's cat came over to my yard this weekend and decided to use it as a litter box, and I'm not thrilled about it.
Right, so again, I'm just saying, people who let their cats free range are now subject to these, this ordinance if it passes. They need to...
And I, when I, when I wrote this, I, I was thinking more, not about free-range cats, but more, that sounds almost like a recipe, but I was thinking more about, you know, the pot-bellied pigs and the other things that people put on a leash, and they go out, they walk...
I understand, but that's not what it says.
Yeah.
So cats are subject to this, chickens are subject to this, or horses are subject to this. If I have to go onto my property and clean up every pile of horse droppings on my farm...
If it's in the city limits, I'd say, yeah, and...
See, this is, this is just going down areas that I don't think we intended to go.
How many horses are in the city limits?
I, I don't know, it doesn't matter, I'm just saying, if you have one.
I don't think it's appropriate.
Certainly the, we could, we can narrow it to say animals on a leash, but then I don't want to encourage people to let their animals run off a leash. It's up to you, I just was trying to be responsive, I used the City of Portland's language.
Yeah, and I'm not arguing with you, but I think, but it, these are just those kind of things that just, I don't know, we, we can just regulate ourselves to death with these things, and we've just kind of create now an atmosphere of, okay, I've been waiting to get this neighbor, now I get this neighbor. And, and it's, you know, it's pretty clear, it doesn't take one, it doesn't say how many, but...
I would like to comment, too. I received an email today from a woman who lives in my ward, and, and a lot of people walk their dogs up and down her road. There's not a lot of housing there, but she said that people are fairly good about scooping it and bagging it, but the problem she's having is that they're leaving their bags on the road. So that last sentence that you added is really important. She said she's really getting tired of picking up all the bags after especially a busy time at the park, at the state park, roads in state park, that when that's overflowing, no places to park, and there seems to be more activity on her road, so, on the road she lives on, excuse me.
Enforcement falls to our police?
As with all city ordinance violations, any enforcement officer designated under the code can issue a violation citation. So certain department heads are, are designated as code or enforcement officers, you have the code enforcement officer, VRD officer, and all police officers. I wouldn't expect that this would be a high priority for official, you know, police officers, but code enforcement, and again, it's a, it's something that would have to be pretty egregious, you're, you're walking, of course you got, you don't want to, we're not talking about testing the DNA of the animal and determining who the owner is.
Yeah.
We're, but what we're doing is basically trying to deter people from this, I wish wouldn't, didn't have to do this, but there are people that just don't take responsibility for their animals.
The reason I ask that question, though, is, we're also opening up the, we've now given free license, any compliance ordinance, ordinance compliance person to approach anyone who's walking their dog and say, "Show me your bag."
Well...
Because you're required to have it, "Show me your bag." It, 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 just, this seems preposterous to me, that we, that it's going to this level. And again, I'm not criticizing you, you did what we tasked you to do, so please don't take this as a criticism. I just, the whole idea of it is beyond me.
I, I had a, we had a pug, and a bag wouldn't cut it, it's, you need a shovel. So I was going to write, "Carry a shovel."
I just, this is, yeah, anyway, so, I'm, I think, Council Hogan, do you have something to jump, I cut you?
Hogland. Hogland, well, I kind of stumbled, Hogland, thank you. Anyway, motion, yes, no?
Well, I haven't read the ordinance yet.
Oh, you haven't read it, thank you.
So if there are any other questions, any interest in narrowing it? Do you want me to just change the word animal to dogs?
Eliminate it completely. Where do we fall with service animals in this?
There's no exceptions here for dog waste. But if, if you, if you want me to limit it to dogs, I can do that.
Not clear on how, I, I'm not having a lot of experience with the sight impaired, impaired people who, the dog, do they know where it's at, and do they clean it up? And I, again, I'm, I'm not trying to be preposterous, but when we write these things, it, it applies across the board.
I think animals is fine.
Go ahead.
Animals, fine.
I agree.
Animals, fine.
Animal, the use of the word animal is agreeable in this document, I agree with the use of animal.
And include all service animals, too?
Yes.
We would find a blind man for not picking up a dog pile?
Yes.
That's brilliant. Okay. All right.
All right, okay, this is, if, if you want to direct me to look at the service animal issue, I'd be happy to look at some additional language. So you would just have to not adopt it today, do the second reading at the next meeting. This is first reading of ordinance 2018-08, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Chapter 604, Animals Generally, adding a new section 604-025, Animal Waste, and amending section 604-050, Violation Penalty, to address owner's duty to properly dispose of animal waste. Ask for approval of first reading.
I make a motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion?
I do have a quick question at the end here. Proper disposal means transporting the animal fecal matter to a place suitable and regularly reserved for disposal of human or animal feces, or to a place or receptacle, specifically reserved for disposal of such animal fecal matter. Leaving the fecal matter in a bag alongside it is not proper disposal. So I think of a place like Olivia Beach, they just have general-purpose trashcans out. There's nothing that says this is where a poopy bag goes.
Normal garbage cans don't either.
Yeah, I know, but it says reserve for, regularly reserved for disposal of human or animal feces.
Oh.
Or a place specifically reserved for disposal.
I could, if you, if you proceed, I could remove the specifically reserved for, and just say, or place, or to a place, or respect, yeah, to a place or receptacle for disposal. So get out of the specifically reserved language. Again, I borrowed this language, and what they intended by that, I'm not sure, but...
I'd agree to that one.
And so if you want to do that, I can change that language before the second reading, but we still have a motion about first reading on the table.
Right. So any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, roll call. Thank you.
Williams.
No.
Hogland.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
And Walkie.
Yes.
Motion carries, and will have to come back for a second reading at the next meeting.
Your Honor, Council, second reading will be on August thirteenth, and, Your Honor, I'll look at the service animal question.
I would appreciate that, thank you very much. Because horses have been qualified as service animals, too. Know that, did you? Okay.
I believe they're tiny horses, though.
You know, you can have a goat, a pig, a horse, it's amazing what you can have these days. All right, blah, 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 blah. No resolution, special order of business, public arts master plan presentation by the Public Arts Committee.
Brother.
Poopies. Lincoln City Poop Squad.
Hello.
T-shirt concession on that.
We did have a presentation.
Oh, you need a slide, yeah.
Maybe have the, the projector screen?
Hey, Nick, you should have your own name tag here by now.
Fuck. Yeah, it's coming.
Should, well, I thought he put that...
Well, we could go ahead and start, we can just talk.
The Council does have the full pub, public arts master plan in their packet.
Very sorry for the delay. So my name is Nikki, and, and I'm here tonight in my volunteer capacity as chair of the Public Arts Committee. And with me here tonight is Patty Seibers, who is the most longstanding member of our committee. How long have you been serving?
Forever, pretty much.
Forever, pretty much.
Since 2010.
Very good. We also have in the audience standing members of the committee, Carrie Hardison, Larry Stevens, and Roxy Stadny, and our new members, Laura Dirksen-Green, and Cynthia Courtney McEvers. So they're all here tonight, all seven of us. And we're here to talk to you tonight about the public art master plan. And let's tell you a little bit about the committee. We've, we are, of course, a pointed body, put forth with mission to improve the quality of life in our city by allowing visitors and residents to view and interact with public art regularly in public spaces. We also are charged by, by our ordinance to instill a concern for beauty and good design in the public and private sectors, and to reflect and communicate the history, character, and values of our community, and create a sense of place. So, you know, easy stuff, right? So a little bit of history, the Percent for Art program that funds the public art program, it was established in 2004. And the Public Art Committee was created in 2005. The first pieces that were funded by the Percent for Art were in 2007, and they include the Copper Salmon Mobile, that's in, that's in the lobby of this building, and also the beautiful Cascade Head relief that's at Northwest Eighteenth Street. Since then, the committee has funded or recommended for funding 24 pieces, and spent a total of In 2016, our committee was at a bit of a standstill. We did not have a lot of money, we had about $12,000 in our account, we also were short on members, and we were a little bit short on vision. So we looked back to our original documents that were put in place in 2005, and found that there was a small plan, about six pages, that really wasn't complete and did not have a lot of guidelines for us. So with the help of our staff liaison, Ed Drystad, we decided to, that it was time to do a new master plan. So in 2017, we put out the RFP, we got the consultants, and we also got a grant from Oregon Arts Commission to help us, the Arts Build Communities grant. Then we hired two well-known consultants, Bill Flood and Valerie Otani, and they helped guide the process. And I know that several of you took part in that process when we were doing outreach activities last, late last year. They brought their, their work forward, and we've been editing it and drafting it and putting it together the way we thought it should be, from, from here until the June 27th, when we approved the, the plan that you received in your packet tonight. So what does the plan do? Let's see if I can get it up here. So this master plan summarizes our existing assets, and identifies the partners and organizations that we should be working with, and also sets forth a vision, a more clarified vision of what our public art program should be. It says, "We envision a well-managed and maintained public art collection that strongly reflects our connections to the land and people of Lincoln City, holds high aesthetic standards, is inclusive of all cultures, and is respected locally and regionally." It lays out goals for the next five years, and identifies some key public art locations.
Yes.
Nikki, could I interrupt for just a second? I just noticed that caption on that picture, I don't believe that's Southwest 51st.
Oh, you're correct, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, that's incorrect caption. Yeah, that's 30, second?
Anchor.
Thirty-fifth and anchor, yeah. Sorry about that.
See if I can get this to play instead of being in that mode. Thank you. Sorry. Okay. Master plan goals, in summary. We seek to reinvigorate the committee and we already very excited to, to know that we are already at seven, which is going to make our decisions and our work a lot easier. But we look forward to the future. We serve in two-year terms and we hope in future that our committee will continue to represent our, our community with people of all ages and people from different cultures throughout our community. We want to apply these new guidelines that you'll find in the master plan, especially in regards to conservation and maintenance. We want to create a master inventory. All that information is now available in file folders and in different locations and we want to create a master inventory that's easily accessible and maybe even digital. We want to apply the deaccessioning criteria where it's, where it's appropriate. We know that some pieces have, have limited lifespans in the sites where they are located and we now have with this plan a criteria for moving them on to their next destination. And we want to work with the Parks Department to establish a maintenance plan for all the pieces that we intend to keep. We want to meet a little bit more often with city departments and people who are planning buildings and other capital improvements to see if public art is part of their plan and how we can help them with that. And we also want to, you know, continue to work and build relationships with nonprofit organizations throughout the community. And we have two main goals in terms of, of actual acquisition of, of artwork for the collection. And one is a major piece. Our goal in the next five years is to, to commission a major artwork with a budget of 70 to $120,000 that will be high visibility with scale and color and engagement that would have a maximum impact on the tourists and residents who come to our town. We wanted to communicate an exuberant welcome to Lincoln City. And at the same time, we would like to work on a smaller participatory piece that will have, have, engage a lot of local citizens in the creation of it. We identified some key public art locations. We want to be looking at the D River Wayside, which, as we all hope, will become a, a new kind of tourist destination and we think a beautiful piece of public art would be appropriate there. We also have been looking at places at the Lincoln City Cultural Center, public property, a great place for more public art owned by the city. Taft has two possible ways of looking at it. One is the, the Growing Arts District that's right on 101. And then we also have a Long History of Art at the end of 51st Street. We're also looking at and responding to requests from the Parks Department to put more art in the city parks. Through the work of our consultant, we also identified a couple other possible sites for public art. One is in private development and if we would possibly work with the private sector to, to create pieces of public art that will help us all. And then we've been looking at the idea of our beach as a beach road. This was something that our consultant came up with and we think it's a really good idea. There are actually two thoroughfares in our town. One is on 101 and then the other one is the beach that we all use up and down and back and forth. And there are a lot of opportunities for mosaics and sculptures and things that will help people not only find their way, but really forge a connection to that location. Joe the Sea Lion's a great example of that. People come right off the beach, they know that that's the beach where the sea lion is and they interact with it and they remember it. He's a, he's a famous little sea lion. So in summary, thanks to a budget, the budget committee from fiscal 2018, 1718, we have a little bit more money in the account, currently $133,000. We have the new members that I mentioned before. And we have three ongoing projects that we've been working on simultaneously with the master project, master plan project. We've been working on refurbishing Joe. We've been working on a maintenance plan for our Lincoln statue, which, as you may realize, is, is no longer a bronze color, but more of a blue color. And we're working on bringing conservators in to find out how much does it need to be cleaned and when and how much can we afford and what would be the ongoing maintenance plan to keep that bronze statue looking good. And then we're also working on Dancing Water, which is the piece that's at Hosteller Park. You can see it from the bridge over the D River. It's a, it's a lovely piece, but it's on property that's slated for redevelopment and it needs a few repairs. So we're going to be applying that, that criteria to it pretty much immediately so we can find the best possible solution for that project. All right, and I'd like to thank Bill Flood and Valerie Otani, as well as Ed and our committee secretary, Rachel Humphert, who is amazing. Brian Wagner from the Arts Commission and Ron Chandler have all helped us with this master plan project. And this photo that you see here, I took just about 10 days ago as I was walking past Lincoln. The woman on the right there grew up in Lincoln City, went to school here, graduated from Taft. Her mother's a teacher. And every time she comes to Lincoln City, she comes to visit Lincoln because when she was a kid, she used to climb up on him and write in the book. And I have heard this story before from other people who have lived here a long time. Now, that's not something that we allow anymore, but this is the kind of relationship that people have with big pieces of public art. And I think that this monumental piece that we're planning is going to have a similar effect on generations of the future and that's certainly what I hope. So that is the end of my presentation and thanks to Patty for moral support. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'm so excited that there is this plan that we can actually look at and think about and touch and read and look at the photos. I do have a number of questions. The first one is in Goal Five. And I just wanted, just wanted to give you the opportunity to help think this out. Goal Five is that the Arts Committee is responsible for purchase and installation while the city will be in charge of ongoing maintenance. And I know a little bit later you explained that a little bit, but when I first read it, I thought, okay, you guys are going to have a great idea and you're going to buy something. And then city staff are going to just automatically know how to take care of it. I know you have a plan, but could you talk about that a little bit?
Well, first of all, we are just an advisory committee and all we can do is pass forward our recommendations for what can be purchased by the city. And so all those purchases will be recommended by us, but need to be, will be vetted by everybody up the ladder. So, so obviously, we, we can just say what, what we think is a good idea. But we have been working directly with the Parks Department because according to these guidelines, our committee's budget is not to be used for maintenance, it has to be with the Parks Department. So we're hoping that if we keep working together really closely, we will not pick something that it, it ends up being excessively expensive to maintain. And we hope that we can pass forward a maintenance plan for it and the Parks can sign off on it.
May I jump in? So Diana, that we also, with the Dancing Water, that one sculpture, I have called the artist to get both her opinion and ways we could fix it. We've done that with the animals in front of, the critters that are in front of the swimming pool, the community center. We try to bring the artist in saying, you know, so they can educate us on this so we can educate the Parks Department. Yes, every, whether it's a mosaic or a sculpture, it's going to be totally different. And we do not expect the Parks Department to happen to know how to fix Sparky, the wish dragon and, you know, and then the mosaic and then. So we do keep, we try to get in touch with the artists who originally created it and ask for their help, ask for their opinion.
So I'm assuming then that ongoing or new art, you will have the maintenance part identified as part of the initial purchase or, or commission or however the art is.
I wasn't aware that we could allot money from the percent for art fund for maintenance so we can set forth the plan. I'm not sure we are allowed to set forth the funds for ongoing maintenance.
I'm, no, what I'm asking is that when, when the Arts Committee selects a type of art that they would like to either purchase or, or commission, along with that, will you get a, you know, an outline, a packet of how to maintain it from then on?
That is the intention, yes.
So I thought I have a few more here. On Goal Number Seven, you're asking to be informed about all capital projects? And I'm wondering if you really mean all of them are significant ones or the ones above ground or I would just, that's a lot of projects.
It is, and this is just an idea of how things could work in an ideal world. But if, if we believe that a, a project is going to qualify for the percent for art funds, you know, certain projects do qualify and certain ones don't. If we believe as the project is going forth through the city process that it's going to qualify and it's going to, to generate these percent for art funds, at that point, we would love to be consulted and, and to lend a hand on, on how those, those funds were going to be spent because they will be spent. And we're sort of offering our service.
No, I love the idea, I just was kind of like, what, all capital projects?
No, no, definitely not. I mean, just, just the ones for which percent for art will apply.
Okay. And I just have a couple more. On Goal Nine?
Yes.
This is about major artwork and grant applications. Can you clarify what you mean by use city resources to apply for grant sponsors or other partners? Do you know what I mean? Use, it's on Goal Nine.
That include consultant management in the budget for the process?
Well, it says use city resources to apply for grant sponsors or partners.
I see.
And I'm just, and I, you know, we kind of want to know what you mean by that.
Well, that's a good point. I believe that what was intended in that goal was that because it's, it's hard to get grants without having a little bit of money already staked. And perhaps with the percent for art funds, we can go out, if, if the piece that we're going to commission ends up being more than what we have allotted, we could put half of it down from the percent for art fund and then use that as leverage to get other grants, say from other entities.
I was just thinking maybe, I wasn't sure, I was trying to guess what you meant here. I was just thinking is that in-kind support to help with grant writing? I just, I didn't know what this meant, so.
I think we meant both resources.
Oh, they're shaking their heads behind you. Okay. All of the above.
Yeah, all of the above.
All right, thank you. And I just wanted to let you know that I really liked your idea of including funding for consultant management of your very large pieces. I think you almost have to have that to have it be really successful. I know you have a full-time job already, so, yeah, I just wanted to let you know that. And one more, actually, a couple more.
How about we do one more and then we'll let someone else in. If you've got more, you can come back.
Okay, that's good. On the smaller-scale participatory project that engages all communities, I think that's really wonderful. That's good, good that that came out of that process.
Good.
Okay, I'll be quiet for a minute.
Anyone else want to comment? Questions?
I have one question.
Please.
Suppose you find a project and projecting it in the future, would you have a way to get a handle on how much more money your budget would need in, in prior to the budget season coming forth? Would you have an eye, would, would you know in advance?
Oh, I, I should, I should think so.
Okay. Keep that in mind for budget season.
Okay.
And if I could, maybe, it's just a question about ways things are spelled and under feedback to this planning process from native Latinx and youth stakeholders, is that, is that an actual word?
It is.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because it was a new word to me as well. And my perception of what Latinx means is that Latino and Latina are both gender-specific words. And you, you cannot use one to, to explain a group of people. And so Latinx is the group of people.
And then kiosk, is that a word?
Yeah, a kiosk is, is something that, it's a really interesting idea. It's sort of like a gazebo. Or it's sort of, it's planned in a different, a slightly different way that people who come from Latin American countries would recognize immediately as being a public square or gathering place. And it's something that is being done in Woodburn and a few other places, Hillsborough, because it's something that the local community of Hispanic people or Latinx people have found attractive and meaningful for them.
And that's their word for it, is kiosk?
It is a word for it, is kiosk.
Okay. I'm done. Mr. Mayor? Yes. Oh, Ms. Walkie, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I, I had a couple of those same questions. On page eighty-nine, there's use of both the term Latino and Latinx. So.
Sorry, we missed one.
Yeah. It's the first paragraph under partnerships and collaborations. There's a ecology.
I see, thank you.
And Latino communities.
We can fix that.
And, let's see. On page eighty-eight, number nine.
Under resources? I'm afraid my numbering is different than yours.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's eighty-eight of the packet. I think it's Goal Nine, Goal Nine.
Goal Nine, okay. Yes?
That second sentence is, is awkward. I think you want to say while the work may not be completed within the next five years, assembling the funds. I, I don't, I think the word but is awkward there.
Agreed.
And then I have a, a couple other little things that I can give you. I appreciate your, your Goal Seven. And I understand that we have a capital improvement project currently. Has the Arts Committee been consultant, consulted about the Police Department building?
No.
Okay. I'd like to see that happen. We've been talking about the percent for public art going into the building and I think we need feedback from the Public Arts Committee on that. So I don't know who to direct that to, but I think that should be done as soon as possible. Get them on board with that. Bye.
Ms. Hoagland?
Sure. Just to be further the point of the Latinx, there's other, there's alternate variations, but it's genderless, whereas Latino, the word Latino includes men and women. Latina is women when you have a group of people, so it's to be genderless. But the question, with the maintenance of Lincoln, you're estimating the cost for the city to repair it as your funds don't allow for the maintenance of it? I just, in the discussion, learned that, but could you explain that further? You're doing what exactly?
We aren't actually doing anything, first of all. We're just gathering information so that the city, the Parks Department, which is officially the entity that's supposed to be taking care of the public art, knows what needs to be done and how to do it, what it might cost. So we have a couple of, we've told it a couple different bronze conservator companies and we found one that we feel is responsibly priced and, and feels like perhaps it would be worth the money to have this person come out and assess than to create possibly the maintenance plan for here on out.
Picked up by the Parks Department?
Yeah.
Okay, just, thank you.
Right, that's, that's the way it's going to have to go.
Okay, it's fine, I mean, I just.
One of these companies that we've talked to has offered to train some of the park staff in how this work is done because it's really not, the, the cleaning and waxing that has to be done on an annual basis, according to this person, does not require an advanced degree. It just requires some training. So we hope that that's the outcome we're hoping for. So we hope that that's the outcome we're hoping for. We're spending a few thousand dollars through the Parks Department and then we'll, we'll know how best to take care of Lincoln and how to keep him looking good.
Can I, before you go on to something new, Councilor Welke had, had asked about the police building. And so you, there was no motion there. Is that something that you wanted to make a motion on to ask the police, the architect to consult with the Public Arts Board or not?
We did, oh, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, we, we've included.
During the police discussions you've talked about?
During the police discussions and also in our budget discussions, we included ten thousand dollars in our budget to be the, a coordination, a coordination person between the committee.
So not today, but in the past during the discussions of the police building, you've basically said the art should be there at the police building and so.
In our last meeting, I'm not sure if you were here, but at our last meeting about the police building, we even talked about potentially, you know, the chief can correct me here, but I think they're, they even mentioned attractive scuppers, you know, from the, to drain the water.
I just don't recall any, any direction to visit with the Parks Committee.
What, what I am.
Oh, sorry, the Public Arts Committee, sorry.
Am emphasizing is that we need the Parks Advisory Committee to be involved in these discussions. We have had these discussions, but we haven't involved them. And they're our advisory committee and I think we need to ask.
Arts, arts.
Yes, excuse me. We, we need to have their input.
I know, but she just.
Wait. I mean, we've suggested it numerous times, we have to make a motion to make them be involved? Is that what you're saying? I mean, we've talked about it and wanted it, so what, what is the step to involve the Arts Committee?
We have not talked about involving the committee.
I have, I absolutely have.
Yeah, and, and putting the money to it.
Absolutely. And I've had discussions with the chief, I've had discussions with Ron.
To them doing that, I mean.
And also with the architect.
I guess I'd suggest that you simply make a motion to direct the city manager to work with the police chief and, and the Arts Committee to maybe get their input at the, at the appropriate time.
To move.
I wouldn't want to rush to them before they're far enough along, so.
Second.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
You still have questions?
Just two, two comments.
Mayor, real quick, who, who made the motion and who seconded it?
Mr. Ogden made the motion and we, Councilor Hinton in a second.
Okay, thank you.
All right, carry on.
Okay. All right, under page eighty-eight and, I mean eighty-nine and ninety, which is the partnerships and collaborations part.
Yes.
The ideas that came from potential partners are fabulous, especially the gazebo and driftwood temporary sculpture events. And I really like the idea of involving more people and artists, especially our well, you know, our local artists. I just wanted to make that comment. And I have one more comment, which is on page ninety-six. And it's about the idea of a dedicated public art manager. I just, I'd just like you to comment about that if you could, please. If you'd like to comment about that.
Comment upon it?
Yes.
Oh.
Explain why, why the plan calls for that and, and just give us a little background about the art manager.
Right, so we did, we did spend money with Bill Flood and Valerie Otani, who are professional art, public art consultants. And they recommended that, that the city hire or look to hire a public art manager. And we, as a committee, did not feel like that was a realistic goal for us in five years' time. And so we put that one clause about a professional manager for the large-scale piece on contract, but we felt that the rest of what we're doing with this, in this, the scope of this plan could be handled with volunteers and with contract work. But this was a recommendation from our consultant and it is an industry practice and it isn't a crazy idea to get, to get a public art manager. So we put it in here as a possibility for people to read and to think about how it might be able to be accomplished sometime in the future.
Questions if I might? And it's just, these are little things that'll be down the road, but I wanted to say them. One thing, Joe the Lion, being as famous as Joe is, and I've brought this up before, nothing that says Lincoln City in a visible way in your pictures. And I'm thinking of social media posts.
In our pictures.
Well, if I'm taking a picture of Joe the Sea Lion, doing a selfie, there's nothing around it that says where I am unless I have a tag within my phone or whatever that says here's where I am or I post it. But because of the enduring nature of internet photos, I would just love to see something more that would say, here's where you are, whenever that could be possible.
No, that's, that's a really good idea because photography is the way that a lot of people interact with these works. So if we could put something that says Lincoln City at the best angle, then that makes sense.
And that gets my next point is, as a visitor to Disneyland, one of the things that I've been impressed by was their partnership with Kodak in the past, saying, here's where you want to stand for your best picture. And I've always liked that. And it, it might even be a way for us to help people create their own art, whether it's with these or just vistas and vantage points that say, hey, here's a spot where you want to stop. You know, if we had an app that would tell you where to go, that'd be even better.
We do have an app there. It's Lincoln City, if you go to the App Store, there is one.
Yeah, yeah. Not the way I want to see it. And then these blue signs, I've been talking since day one how dangerous those things are. I've seen little kids clock their heads into those things. And I'd love to see an oval or a round. I know outside of the Biju, they put little bumper guards on them, but those things are right at eye levels for about a three-year-old and they're hideous to me, so.
Well, you know, that's completely out of our control.
I understand that, but I'm just throwing it out there for public consumption.
But so, so you know, that's, that's not something that the Public Art Committee has had anything to do with. It's, it's probably the museum and the Visitor Convention Bureau.
They're dastardly.
No, no, they're wonderful. People read them and, and they get a lot of information from them.
Children, well.
So I think they're really great.
I agree. And then there was something in here, just briefly, about, I don't know if it said highlighting 101 or that, you know, because we have so much traffic on 101, to beautify or whatever, but I, I want to make sure that while 101 is great, and, and I remember my visits to Long Beach in particular, as I walked on their main street, which is not their highway, but a main thoroughfare, almost every corner had a piece of public art. And it was, it was drawing me further each time I went, but I would like to see an emphasis, the east-west emphasis for some of these things, not just strictly 101, but can we get people to walk further into a neighborhood by saying, hey, we've got public art this way or even smaller pieces, but just a thought.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If we're, if I may take the opportunity, I don't know which city south of here has the sea lions around the city. I've, used to live in the Midwest and was in Chicago often where they had the cows and I think other cities, big cities had these art installations. And I think as our new, though I don't agree with it, the octopus, I think that would be a wonderful thing if we had select, you know, twenty of them down the highway or various locations. I mentioned something to Ed Dreystad a while back ago, but if, and I don't know when I was supposed to present that to or tell you, but since you're here, that's something like that, to have artists paint, decorate, glassblow, tile work or whatever, if that's something you guys haven't thought about.
That sounds interesting.
So, you know, along the highway, so that's something, so, for what it's worth.
And just, are we at a point to accept or we just say thank you for your presentation? There's nothing else, that was it, right?
They're asking for approval.
Okay, so we're looking for approval.
Okay, I move to enthusiastically approve the Public Arts Master Plan as recommended by the Public Arts Committee. Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
A bunch of rowdy artists here. Thank you for not bringing balloon animals.
Nicky?
Okay, potential pilot program, wireless hotspots for library checkout.
I am here to tell you about a potential project that we're considering at the library. And I, I brought this up to the library board at our last meeting and Council Casper thought it might be something that the council would be interested in hearing about. A number of libraries have started checking out wireless hotspots to users. And just in case you don't know what a wireless, what it is, these are cellular, cellular devices that you can usually connect up to ten device, Wi-Fi devices to. And they use cellular data to create a Wi-Fi hotspot in your house or, you know, anywhere you, you can carry it anywhere you want. So somebody could even take it to the park and have Wi-Fi in the park if they wanted to or. But the, the main source of interest for libraries is that they are a potentially really effective way of addressing issues with folks not being able to get internet access. There's a number of libraries in Oregon that have started lending these out. Seaside Public Library launched a program last year, as did the Wasco County Library District and a number of other libraries. I found a number of programs across the country. Most, a lot of libraries tie it to, you know, you say, I don't have internet access at home and you can check them out. Some libraries only check them out to families with students. So there are a number of different ways that we could go about it. And we've discovered that through grant programs, there's a company called TechSoup that does free and low-cost technology solutions for libraries and other nonprofits. They've partnered with Mobile Beacon. And they, to set up a hotspot or to set up a pilot program with ten hotspots would be a cost of about thirteen hundred dollars to the library. And I want to make it clear that the library's budget as it stands could absorb this, but one of the reasons that Councilor Casper thought that the council might be interested in it, in it is because of the specific interest in extending internet access. So I guess I'm happy to tell you, answer any questions that you might have or tell you more about how it's worked at other libraries, anything like that.
Christian, when do you anticipate beginning this project?
Well, I looked up and it looks like the, the TechSoup project to get the low-cost ones has been extended to the end of next fiscal year, so we could really launch this at any time. I would probably go for trying to launch it in the fall to tie in with kids going back to school so that we could promote it that way. I don't think it would take very long to get everything set up, but September is coming up pretty quickly, so we might have to go for more like an October launch if we decided immediately to go for it.
I noticed you had contracts from, where is it, Seaside?
Yes.
As far as checking it out, so it sounds like some legwork has already been done. And the company, Mobile Beacon, we haven't dealt with them, I believe, here in the city yet, have we?
No, they are, they're, they're, they specifically serve nonprofits using Sprint's cellular network. So basically, any place in the city where you can get Sprint reception, you would be able to use one of these hotspots.
This was of particular interest to me because I know we're working on, working for internet at the teen center in the community center. And so I would really appreciate any report back you can give us about this and if it looks like something we could pursue for like the high school in coordination with the library or the middle school and maybe expand our, our use for students as well, but sort of use you and the library to work out the kinks and see like how many, how, how the speed works, how it fluctuates, how the internet provider gives service, those kinds of things before we, we delve into it. So I'm, I'm really excited to see how it can work out.
Me too.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So it's, just so that it's, this would only be for checkout and not for placement in the other buildings for right now?
Right now, yeah.
This ten-person, ten thing, okay.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
How long do you foresee the lending period to be?
Well, the Seaside has been doing it with a one-week lending period. We would, I would probably want to poll, maybe do some informal polling of other libraries that are checking them out, find out what's been working best for them. With a limited number of devices, I think a shorter lending period would mean that more people would be able to have access to them. And, you know, if we're starting out with only a handful of devices, that's, that would probably be the best choice. You know, I've, there are some pretty large-scale projects where, for example, Queens Public Library has made it possible for any family with a student in the Queens Public Library or Queens School District to check it out for, check one out for an entire school year, which is, I think, maybe a little bit more ambitious than we could tackle right away, but it really would do a lot to address that kind of, the, the access issues that we've heard about for our students.
And then I was wondering if you've done any research about user agreements or internet use agreements?
Yes, I have. Most libraries, what they do is they have somebody, have the person who checks it out sign an agreement saying, you know, basically it would probably be about the same as the agreement that folks click through when they use our internet downstairs, just saying, you know, that they will abide by state and federal laws and, you know, not use it to harass, not be, you know, not, not engage in illegal activity, that kind of thing.
I have a question just one.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just curious about how big these devices are and how.
They're about the size of a cellphone, a large smartphone. So usually a little box like this.
And then how, what, is it packages, something to protect it or that people can hang on to? I'm just, if I came to check it out, if I had.
Yeah.
I mean, how do I?
Um, you know, I think I would have to find out a little bit more about how other libraries have packaged them effectively. Some of the ones I've seen, they were basically were circulating them in the box they came from, came in with the, you know, the plastic insert to keep them from rattling around and things like that.
So that would be something to lose unless it was significant to.
Yes.
Keep track of, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Could you, obviously it's free internet and that's really nice. Would you have the capability of turning it off downstairs to warrant them to come in to renew it or to turn it back in so that they don't, they'll just keep using it for as long as they have it in their pocket?
That's a really interesting question. I, I would need to check on that. I seem to recall seeing that some of them have that functionality, that if it's overdue, you can remotely cut off the access to that, you know, through that particular hotspot.
Or if you see some kind of, something violation or something, you know, something that you, you at the, at the base have a way to manage.
Yeah, I don't think we would be able to manage, you know, to monitor.
Consumption.
Content at all, but we definitely would be, it sounds like there is a way that you can maybe contact the carrier and say, okay, I need you to cut off the subscription for this particular device, which would at least keep people from, you know, taking off with it and continuing to use it for free.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I, I would just go round and round again with the same thing we talked about with fines and this, that and the other thing. It's just, to me, it's, if we apply the same logic to this that we do to fines, we're just going to say, whatever, don't worry about paying for it, just keep it, do whatever you need to do and, because we're afraid that you don't know what you're doing or you can't figure out how to talk to us, we'll just dismiss these fines or, or the agreement. And I just, I'm not in favor of this until we sort these kind of things out. And for me, it's, do we say this is going to be a resident-only thing? Is it going to be, hey, I'm going to come to Lincoln City for a weekend and I need, I need Wi-Fi?
It would be a cardholder thing. I would want to talk to the, the library advisory board and find out if they wanted to limit it, limit it just to our regular full-privileged cards. I think that's probably what we would do. We do have temporary cards that folks can get if they're just visiting, but I think we would probably want to limit access to those who had normal Lincoln County resident cards.
And I'm, I'm really not insensitive to the, the need for this. It has just really become just a, it's a day-to-day almost existence that you require to have these things to go about your business of the day. Yeah, I just would like to see a level of accountability. Yeah, I just would like to see a level of accountability enforced, that if we're going to provide these things as a service, as a courtesy, that it's respected. And the fact that, again, if you've got it, that means someone else doesn't have it, and you have an obligation to make it available, or pay for it, if you're not going to return.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that's something that's enforced.
Yes, and what we would likely do, which is what other libraries do, is, in addition to the usual checkout procedure, the person who checks it out has to sign a license, you know, a user agreement saying, you know, "I promise I'm going to bring it back on time with all of the, these parts that come with it. And if I don't, then I get charged $100," is usually what the, the amount that they set on that, because that covers the cost of the device, and a little bit of a nuisance sort of thing as well.
Mr. Mayor, I have another question. So this is a pilot project, and I, and maybe it's in here, but how long is the pilot for? How long are you going to study this?
Well, probably I would go for a year. If it just goes like gangbusters, and we feel like it's going really well, we could look into maybe asking the foundation or the friends for funds to purchase additional hotspots. But what I really like to do is start out with 10, maybe revisit it in six months to a year, and say, "Okay, how are things going? Is it completely obnoxious to maintain? You know, is it doing what we want it to do?" All of those things.
Could you come back and give us an update in six months, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
After you heard some of the questions this evening?
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Kirsten, Kirsten?
Oh, yes.
Did you say that there is money in the budget for the 1308?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Cooperative Improvement Agreement, I'm sorry, no, Northwest 21st Street Improvements.
Excuse me, I think I'd like to take some action on that last presentation.
Yeah, yeah. I had more thoughts on who should be allowed to do it. Mr., Ms. Walk, yeah, Kirsten, would you come up, back up, please? Ms. Walkie, if you would like to.
No.
I would, I, I'm wait, I'm sorry. Sorry, Lila. I would like it to be students, you know, enrolled students, absolutely, as first, as this is the main priority for that, and verified students, or somehow you're able to determine, you know, and not be just public school, it could be, you know, whatever, enrolled student.
I will, yeah, I will, I will do a little bit of research to figure out the best way to do that. One thing is that most libraries do not check them out to cardholders who are under 18 because of the replacement cost. So we might have to say something like, you know, a student and their parent, or a student, or a parent who brings in, you know, some kind of evidence that their child is enrolled. And I also, you know, will probably want to run that by Ms. Appicello to make sure there aren't any, you know, I don't know, legal stumbling blocks, in terms of, can we provide access, or service for one particular section, subset of the population?
And how are you going to determine? I mean, I think it's going to be very, very, very popular.
Yes.
So it's just going to be...
Yes, and I think you've put your finger on the, the most difficult part of launching this, is figuring out exactly how we want to target it.
Because you have a drawing, just so that it's, I mean, really, I mean, I don't know, but, I mean, for real, because it's going to be, everybody's going to want to do that.
Yeah, it's going to be popular, so.
I don't want to pay for it, and I'd love to have it for free.
Get it in a week at a time. Sign up.
Christian, will you be working with Mr. Appicello?
Yes.
Or do we need to make a motion to that direction?
I don't think we need to.
Well, this was on the agenda item without a recommended motion. Probably because the dollar amounts involved are well within the manager's contracting authority, so I think they just wanted to let you know what was going on.
Okay, good, great. Excellent, all right.
Everyone done? Thank you. Lila?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I have an actual conflict of interest concerning awarding a contract for the Northwest 21st Street Improvements, since my son-in-law is an employee of one of the bidders, RK Concrete Construction, so I'll recuse myself from participation in the discussion of this agenda item.
Thank you very much. All yours.
Okay, thank you. So this is a request for your approval on a construction award for Northwest 21st Street Improvements. And this project includes upgrading sidewalks along Northwest 21st Street to meet ADA standards, and doing a pipe bursting, so for the sanitary sewer main line, replacing 220 feet of sanitary laterals, adding parking on the south side of the street, with striping for parking on the north side of the street, and an asphalt overlay. And so we put this project out to bid, advertised it on June 13th, 2018, and opened bids on July, or July 5th. Bids were open, we received three. The low bidder is K&amp;E Escavation Incorporated for $458,548.60. And the second is Jesse Rodriguez Construction for $533,431. And RK Construction for $629,007.09. And so our lowest responsive and responsible bidder was K&amp;E Construction in the amount of $458,548.60. And we have three different sources of funds, as you see on the memo. We had, we had this designed before, and then we had to wait for sewer money in this last budget, so it was a fairly big sewer project there. So our staff recommendation is to award the, recommend awarding the construction contract to K&amp;E Escavating in the amount of $458,548.60, with a construction contingency of $45,854, 10% of the bid amount, for a total of $504,402.60. And our, our budget for the project was $525,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. So with the budget being $525, and the engineer's estimate at $376, why was there such a big difference in that?
Part of it's the bidding market right now.
When was the engineer's estimate completed? I mean, I know that, I think asphalt goes higher quicker, right? I mean...
Right, right. And the asphalt on this one...
Yeah, it was, went from...
Yeah, our, our estimate was $120,000.
$2,500, it looked like.
And their bid was actually 97.
Yeah.
And there's quite a bit in the flagging, because we're going to have to, it's Northwest 21st, so it goes down to Harbor and all the motels. If we could just close the street, it would be a savings, but we can't do that. We need to flag and let people get to their, you know, destinations on that street, on Harbor.
Do you think that was the majority of the $75,000 difference between?
It's probably a good portion of it. And also just the bidding, we're seeing everything go up right now.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to extend the time of our projects out a little bit further, so it's more flexible, and helps bring the bids down.
I don't, I don't recall in the past, but I know for me personally, I always go to Google Maps when you put these, and to see what it is, because I don't always remember it. Is that something that you'd be able to do, just to give us some, just one map, just to see? Because it always helps me see, you know, does it go down?
Where it is.
And, you know, where, like, where is the parking that you're going to do? You know, like, I'm trying, like, I was just trying to figure out, like, where are you going to, where are you going to put the parking lot? How are you going to stripe? Are you taking rid of the gardening area? What, I mean...
I'll put the site plan...
You know, like, just, just for me, because I'm, am I saying okay to this being removed? Am I saying okay to that being removed? And I don't know at all what I'm saying okay to that way.
And I know.
And I'm sure that you do have it, I just didn't get that particular document.
Yeah, we can sure do that. Usually, we, we put it on our website, so you can go look at the entire plan set, and...
More pictures, the better.
Pictures, but I can attach them to the packet, too, so it's real quick for you to see.
You know, we have 153 pages to go through, you know?
Well, I just do the site plan.
I appreciate, I appreciate the information, is what I'm saying. Like, I, I think that you're trying in that, in that vein, so, thank you.
Any more questions, or are we going to motion?
Make a motion to approve of the...
You have it written really nicely there on...
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to get there. My finger's not moving. I move to award the construction contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, K&amp;E Escavating Incorporated, in the amount of $458,548.60, with a contingency of $45,854, a 10% of the bid amount, for a total amount of $504,402.60.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Hoagland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Lila.
I have the next one, too.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay. So this is a, this next one is an agreement with ODOT. It's a cooperative improvement agreement to do, and this one does have a map attached, but we're, we're doing improvements at the Burger King intersection, and entering into City Hall, and so that's the city part of it, and you'll see that when it's, when it's bid, we'll bring that back to you for approval. And of course, the other ODOT portion of it. So they're doing driveways in front of McKay's Market in front of City Hall, and then they're doing every intersection up to 14th Street. So we have some, some pretty bad ramps, and those are the ones that they had complaints about. And so as they, as they usually do in their contracts with, with us, they want us to put money upfront. And so I asked that of them on this one, so that we can actually pay the bill on time and not wait for the money, so it'll go into an account, and when we get the first billings, we'll be able to pay those, and then as it goes along, we'll have to invoice ODOT and give them all of their, their paperwork. But we're taking this project on in-house, and they're going to give us a design. We already have our design in place, and then we'll, we'll move on with the project. And I think a portion of it will be night work, but it will be, you know, they'll be moving along at those intersections on 101. And so by the time, by the time we get everything put together, it'll probably be done in the winter time, so we're not out trying to mess with traffic. So their estimate's $450,000, that'll be financed by ODOT. And then they're also designing the signal design work for us, because we're improving the signal at Burger King, and adding a second crossing, so it'll look like a four-way crossing instead of just the one. And we've had many accidents in that sidewalk, so this'll just get a little more attention to our, our intersection there, and entrance to City Hall.
To the north side of that?
Yes, it'll, it'll be on the north side. We'll add one to the north side with crossing lights.
Will it be a 90-degree there, or how will that work? Because they don't exactly line up.
Yeah, it's...
And it's not listed in that either, where they do have, you know, on this, on page one, packet page 149, they do have, you know, 12th Street across Highway 101 to East Devil's Lake Road, they do show that intersection, but then on the previous page, it doesn't show that that will be done. It has the Cs, you know, those little indicators of ramps funded, but it doesn't say, you know, and that, and I read that, but then I saw that, and it didn't, I didn't...
Yeah, well, it's...
It didn't look like they agreed there.
Yeah, our design is lining up, so I'll get, I'll get more of our design out to you, too.
Secondly, all of this improvement, specifically with regard to the Lincoln Square, will that all be compatible with the plan, or will this tie in to the plan of the rebuilding of the ground down there?
Yes.
So that it's all good, it'll be...
Yes, I'm, we're, funding-wise, I'm, I'm trying to do this in phases, because it's such a big project, so we're going to do the access into City Hall and the intersection, and into the front door. And then we're also doing some improvements on the, on the east side.
So on page, Exhibit A, page one of two, on the northest, northmost, you know, where you would drive into City Hall, you know, there's just, that red indicating that it will be improved, it isn't there in my paperwork. You know, it's not, it doesn't say that, that entire intersection will be improved.
Okay.
So it's just, it's just confusing visually for me, that, and I, and I went through, and I said, "Okay, well, then they're doing ramps here, and they're doing a crosswalk, you know, on three sides of the highway, at the, at the light at the mall, you know, they're not going to put a, that fourth crosswalk." But then I went back up, and it just didn't see that, so it was just, but in the verbiage, it did say that, so, you know, I was a bit confused.
Yeah, I can, we can send you something that makes that more clear.
No, I don't, I don't need that.
Okay.
So that I understand.
Yeah, and so everything, everything in red is what is in the ODOT project, and then the Burger King crossing is what the city's going to do.
So I was looking at ODOT's map of what they're going to do.
Yeah, the ODOT map is in red, if you, it has a little key, little legend on it, but the Cs are what we're, we're going to do. And so we'll add our plan to their drawings and bid it all together, so we'll, we should get a better bid, and get the project completed.
I have a question, if I may. Are you done, Councilor? Okay. Perhaps I've missed it somewhere, but the, the authority of the units of local government, agreements with American Indian Tribes, exclusions, conditions for public contracts, did I miss something in there, that we're doing something with the tribe?
Not on this particular project, but I think the authority, it's just how that authority is written. We will be doing something with them on West Devil's Lake Road path.
Yeah, 19110 refers to authority to enter into agreements with state agencies, and that's applicable here. The next item, it's applicable to the Indian tribes.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion?
I move to approve the Cooperative Improvement Agreement for the City of Lincoln City Curb Ramp Project.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Only that I'm glad to see it happening. This is going to be nice. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Excuse me. Walkie?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Before you go, I forwarded to Ron something from a fellow who is a manager with UPS, and I wanted to bring it to your attention while you're here, because I said I wouldn't, so it gets forwarded to you and council. It concerns the new Roundabout, 53rd?
Port.
Yeah, Port, thank you.
Northeast, North Port.
Because his trucks can't negotiate it, cannot navigate that circle. They have to go into the neighboring cul-de-sac to turn around, and he says the same thing is true with the school buses. So forwarding that information here, I've forwarded it to Ron, and just wanted to make you aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
For some reason, my computer keeps minimizing every time I move. All right, amendments, Amendment Five to Memorandum of Agreement between the Confederate Tribes, Confederate Tribes of Celest Indians of Oregon and City of Lincoln City, State of Oregon.
Your Honor, council, this was a request from Mr. Chandler to put this together after your joint meeting with the tribe. There was one word in here, I believe it says retroactively, which actually was picked up from the last, the last amendment number four was approved in August to relate back to the July expiration. This is not retroactive. Basically, this would extend the agreement where the tribe contributes funds to the city for another two years, so it asked for, but the correction of the word retroactively that you approve the agreement.
And motion?
Make a motion to approve the Fifth Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement between the Confederate Tribes of Celest Indians of Oregon and the typo-corrected City of Lincoln City, State of Oregon.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion.
I, I like the fact that it was being extended to July 31st, 2020, also at the end of the month, made it, made a little more sense than the 26th, or whatever.
28.
And since we do have a slight money component, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Did you have a question?
Walkie?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you, I'm so sorry.
I had a teeny question. I just wondered what the annualized average Pacific CPU, how that was devised? Does anybody know?
I, you know, I was informed that they wanted to change it from the Portland Consumer Price I, you know, I was informed that they wanted to change it from the Portland Consumer Price Index, and what they told me was annualized average Pacific CPU, and I don't know the answer as to why. That's just what came from the Finance Department.
I think in that meeting, Chandler had said that the Portland Consumer Price Index is dissolving, and it will no longer be able to provide the function that it was previously.
That was my understanding.
So they needed a new price index, if you will.
Yep, question.
Roll call.
Walkie?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, City Manager, City Attorney reports.
I do not have anything this evening.
All right, thank you. We miss Mr. Chandler, and hope he's having a good time, and gets back to us safely. Actions, if any, based on work session or executive, none. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Anyone care to speak? Seeing none. Announcements or comments by City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So recently, it's been brought to my attention that certain groups have canceled their, their groups. They have ceased to function due to price, if you will. And if I could get the approval of you guys to have maybe a presentation, or why the fees are such for renting out fields and things, you know, from the Parks Department, and to see about that. But it's been brought to my attention that, you know, they, some things were canceled because of the fee schedule, so.
May I ask, because this came up a while ago, I remember, it was like two, three weeks ago, and I did talk to Ron, and I talked to Jeannie at the same time, and they said they had contacted the people who had the initial complaint. Is there something extra?
I don't know if it's been, I don't know what's been done since then, but still, that, you know, that can be brought back as far as the reasons for the price for, you know?
Yeah, no, I'm totally at top, but?
I don't know since, I don't know since that issue, I don't know what's been done, either way.
I'll, I'll give you just my input from the discussion I had, and I agree, we should have a little talk about it. But they said it was actually an error on our part, the fee increases, and it was, it shouldn't have been, and it was taken back, and everyone was happy.
Okay.
I still think you're right.
Okay.
We should discuss it.
Okay.
But the people who were upset were, not placated, but made happy, so. Anyone else?
I had a concern. Back a long time ago, there used to be a committee called the Traffic Safety Committee. And before traffic control devices were changed, like the Roundabout on Port, and, and the stop signs on 14th, things went through the Traffic Safety Committee. And I know that there was a representative from the Police Department on that committee. And I'm wondering if, if anyone else in the Council has interest in looking into bringing that committee back.
And its purpose would be?
To get some public input about changes to traffic control devices. We, this, this Roundabout that was brought to the Council, Councilor Hinton and I had concerns, because it was in our neighborhood and we were familiar with it. We had a meeting with neighbors, and we thought we kind of made everyone happy. But obviously, the UPS drivers and the school bus drivers are having problems. So I'm thinking that maybe we need to go back and get more grassroots input about changes to traffic control devices.
The only thing that a mayor can do is create a committee. So if you wish to, if you want a committee, I will?
I've also had lots of?
Point you to a committee.
I, I've also had lots of complaints about the suggested stop signs on 14th.
I think it's a great idea. It's one of those things where, after the fact that we've all done these things, that we voted, everyone comes out and says, wait a minute, why'd you do that? Well, maybe we need to get that cart and horse thing.
If we have more grassroots input to begin with.
Ms. Appicello?
I believe the manager in his weekly report told you about upcoming ordinance to talk about the effectiveness of municipal traffic regulations under the code. This is in Chapter 10, which actually includes a reference to the Traffic Safety Committee. In Chapter 10, the authority of the Council to close roads and things like that is delegated to the City Manager, and then, but it delays the effectiveness of any order he makes for 30 days, which is a problem when the public works, wants to close a road this weekend in order to do some work, and it's, his, his order has to be delayed 30 days. So because I was going to be in this section, I was going to try to address the Traffic Safety Committee, because it exists here, but it is not in Chapter Two as a committee. So I guess you'll have the opportunity in a couple of weeks to add it back in, if you want to add it as a regular committee, or to assign those tasks to another committee. So I'll talk to Mr. Chandler. He hasn't really told me which way he wants to go on it. If you guys have input, please share.
Well, perhaps this is a time, too, we could ask our local news sources to maybe put out that call for us, that Councilor Walkie is interested in hearing from folks who might be interested in being on a Traffic Safety Committee, and make a contact her here. Is that good?
Yeah.
Cool. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor? I had a citizen talk about the exhaust coming from Burger King in that neighborhood makes people sick, and it's really pretty noxious. I, I don't drive there around, you know, I don't drive there, but I know height-wise where that exhausts is in the neighborhood there. I can only imagine what it's like. I mean, I haven't hung out there, and I just, if, what, if anything, we could do to try to mitigate that, if they can have a higher smokestack, or something to where it doesn't blow into their living room? I mean, we've done things for chickens, and the eggs, and now dog waste, and, you know, we're trying to have a good, clean place. And, you know, I think what you smell is very important. So I don't know anything about it, other than it was brought to my attention that it's just absolutely awful.
Yeah, this is one of those, I remember, came up when I was back on planning, and it had been thoroughly exhausted, no pun intended, that I think, yeah, but I guess we could revisit, and, or at least we could provide Councilor Hoagland with some of the findings.
We can get you some information. It's been brought up before, and I'm not, I don't remember exactly how it was resolved, but there is something that they're required to do, so we'll, I'll make sure that Mr. Chandler has the information.
Anybody else? No? Well, by golly, I don't have anything, except that my son is up in Alaska helping a church, rebuild a church. I'm so proud of him, so I thought I'd say that, well done. Nothing else for the good of the group. May God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned. An eight-twenty, not so bad.